It's time we call the meeting to order. And the Super Board of Education made a regular meeting on Monday, July the 15th, 2024, at 5:30 PM. Members present are David, Brett, Kenny, and Susie. This time we move to approval of minutes from the June 10th, 2024 meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Rage of religions. My Kenny.
Mr. Kenny. Father in heaven, we love you, Lord, and we ask you to be with this group, Father. Ask to be with us and be with our school, be with everything going on, the contractors, Father, everyone that's working out here, just covering in their precious comfort, Father, and everything that's going on. We ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every routine justice for all.
Thank you, Kenny. This time we move on to approval of the minutes from the June 10th, 2024 meeting.
Any changes?
No.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve the minutes at the June 10th, 2024 meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
And then move on to approval of encumbrances and change orders.
Okay. On our general fund encumbrances, we have not very many this month. 5:30 was the lodging for the COSA conference. 5:32 was supplies for the superintendent's office. 5:33, 34, and 35 were all for Ag out of his 412 account. 5:39 were supplies for the maintenance department from the home center. On the next page, we have our encumbrances, and that's all the summer school posse payroll. The next page, PO 80141 is the reading stipend for literacy for the elementary school teachers. They do that letters training and they get a stipend from the state, and that's what that is. I'm not sure why they call it LITCOP stipend. I'm not sure what that even stands for, but that's what it is. It's the reading stipend. The change orders are... This is from our blanket. Blanket POs are a little higher than we originally thought. And the first one is PSO electric, a little bit higher, 5,250 higher. JE system, part of that was to relocate the fiber lines. RMR had to do some extra spraying around the last few weeks of school. Of course, OCG, insurance, the workers' comp, all those a little higher than we originally planned. The Oklahoma Healthcare Authority, that's for the Medicaid. We don't know how much they're going to pay us. We really don't know for sure how much it is, so that was more than we thought. The PO 173, that's a city sticker for the SRO, just a little bit higher. And then the summer maintenance was a little bit higher, so.
Are these total costs?
No, it's additional. Kind of like, you know, that OCG, 72,000 total was, you know, 294. We knew it would go up some. We didn't know it was going to go up that much.
But went up $74,000.
Yeah, actually, it went up, it went up about $80,000. We knew it was going to go up a little bit. We didn't think it was going to go up that much.
What is OCG?
School insurance. That's our liability. All that insurance, liability.
They don't have any choice, or do they?
No, we have one company.
Is that crazy?
Yeah. And then the next one is our child nutrition. That's the summer school payroll. And that is our encumbrance.
Just out of curiosity on the insurance, do you, how do you, like, is there a deductible with that? Can you mess with the deductibles to make the?
I don't know. Not much.
I'm not saying it's worth it, but I didn't, how much, how much control do we have over it, I guess?
Not a whole lot. Not on that. There's a little bit change. It doesn't affect it as much. It just goes up so much. Our big thing was when we, once it was up, you know, our, what the, what the valuation was up, you know, over 10 million, which we want to be covered on everything, but, you know, it's still, I mean, it was, what, 135,000 about three years ago, and it's 290-something thousand.
Inflation's probably driving a lot of that.
Too many tornadoes around, too.
And naturally, that's disasters, hurricanes.
You know, maybe we might be glad there is somebody that covers us. You know, I don't know. Maybe there's not. Nobody will come in here and do it. It's not good. I mean, no, Arkansas, their state legislature appropriated more money for schools to pay the increase. So other states are the same. Other states are the same way, but it's all over, but.
Take that, talk to our legislatures about that.
They need to reimburse us for all that.
Right. At least, you know, if you can even get 50% of it back.
Yeah, something. It's just, it's skyrocketing. I mean, it's amazing.
You got that on a spreadsheet or something?
Yeah, like how much each part is.
Send that to me.
Yeah, Kenny, you can talk on that.
You know, go back a couple of years on it.
Oh, yeah.
Comparison, what it used was and.
How much goes up every month? We really, you know, our valuation went up, but.
Kiva and all these schools do, and have him give it to me. I mean, just, I'm sure there's the same way.
Yeah.
Take this old county tool and.
Things like this across the board. I mean, ours did the same thing personally and worked it out.
It's astronomical.
They need to appropriate that from one end back to this.
Did they come in and do an audit on something, the insurance company, and then they?
They did. That's what they did.
Then they reevaluated.
They reevaluated. Right, they did our audit.
That's what ours did. Whenever it comes in for an audit, and then it hits you with a, you know, $30,000 extra bill. Ours is, a lot of ours is compatible on this stuff, too. So, anyway, okay.
Yeah, I would definitely do that.
Create a problem. Make one to approve encumbrances.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve the encumbrances and change orders as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
It's time to move on to the financial reports.
Okay. All right, our first one. Payroll wasn't up much because, you know, most of the teachers are gone, so their salaries have already paid that big increase, so payroll's up a little bit, but not too much. See, our bills are up quite a bit from last year, and that puts us 130,000 more than last year. I know you're looking, saying, why are we up so much? Oh. Of course, insurance. Our insurance was $83,201 more than last year. Our textbooks were 143,000 more than last year. And the last year we did, it was English Language Arts, and it's, it's not a very big one because reading and English Language Arts are separate. And so at the high school, I'm pretty sure they just got like a classroom set, and this year we got, with math, and so we made sure everybody had the textbook, and it's actually K through 12 got, got the textbook. So it's a big jump, but it's, you know, it's textbooks. I think everybody needs a textbook. Of course, the vehicle, that was 57,000, and then the SRO was 32,000, and that puts us, that was right at 327,000. So that's where the difference is. The positive on that is our carryover this year is 3,751,000. So that's a big increase from last year. But we've got, you know, we graduated 100, and it's kind of pitting. Right now, I looked the other day, we're 70 kids less this year than we're last year. So hopefully it'll increase, but, you know, we lose 70 kids. That's about almost 500,000. So, I mean, this year we're going to be great, but next year it's going to be a problem. So we've got to maintain a healthy carryover, you know. And I know when you see that, you think, man, we need to put more money here or there, but we really, we can't, because if we had, you know, if our numbers were going to stay the same, I think it'd be fantastic, but, you know, they're not. So we've got to be prepared, prepared for that. Building fund, we're at 2,405,000. We got our second red bud in of 205,000, so we're doing really great in there. Child nutrition, 165,000, so that's doing well. Next year, everybody's free, K through 12. So I, I think we're, right now, we're in great shape. We just need a few more kids. But I think, other than that, really, our carryover is about 1.27 more than last year. We have a lot of, that means, you know, we have a lot of revenue. Most of that's from state aid. We've got the SFR, some of the SFR funds that were in general fund. There's 200,000 in SFR III funds that we're going to have to, you know, build into our salaries next year. So all that kind of factors into our carryover and what we can do.
We usually get a few at the beginning of school.
Right. I mean, that's what I say. It's early.
Kind of what is the average when we, I mean, like, maybe 30?
That's what I'm hoping is more than.
Will we get at least, do you think?
I think so. And there was about 20 new transfers that we hadn't put in yet, so that brought us up a little bit, and that's where I got 50. But we're at 70. And I'm looking at, I'm just looking at what rolled up, and that's not accurate, but it's, I'm trying to get, it's too early. It's too early.
Approximately.
But it makes, you know, I want to think, because the problem is, we graduated 100. Right now, we only have 37 enrolled in pre-K. Last year, we had 57. We only have 60-something enrolled in kindergarten. Last year, we started out with 96, so that's 50 kids that we need. And they're early. I mean, it's early, and I keep telling myself that, but I think it's better to be prepared, and that's why we're in good shape here, because we can, we can make it through some lean years.
Where did those kids go? I mean, did they move out of the district, or did they transfer to district, other districts?
You know, when they did the census a year or two ago, we're 10% down. So, and that's there. But last year.
Because that's a lot.
Was a blessing. We gained 40 kids last year. You know, this, the 24 school year for the 23, we gained 40 kids. And we really, it's a big boost, and that's why we were able to carry over so much. And then this year will be great, because we're going to be a build off of our last year's number. You know, it used to be your highest three, which would be, would have been great, but that's gone. But this year, we're going to be in great shape with our same, be pretty similar. We lose our SFR, the general fund SFR, which is about 200, but we're going to be fine. We're going to build in that with some Title I money, transfer some Title II, Title I. It's all remediation. It was all supplemental, so we can pay for that in Title I. So we're, we're going to be all right. We're going to be great this year. We can borrow, you know, people's already talking about two air conditioner units down, so I don't want to talk too loud, but this year we will be, and that we will be in the future. It's just we have to be prepared, and I think, but when people see a big number and think, man, why don't we do something with that? But that's why.
That's what he's doing. He's sitting over there wondering. He's thinking of all these things. He's going to spend that money and what. He's making a list and checking it off.
You know, like, talking about those air conditioning units, they were 2002 models. They're 22 years old. So, I mean, it's, it's expected, but it doesn't have to be back-to-back days either. But we're, we're in great shape, so don't think that, but I know people are looking at that and think, man, that's a big carryover, but there's a reason we needed to do that. I think we're in great shape right now.
I'm just glad to see it going, you know, starting.
Yeah, we're really good. I think a new building is going to help. I think things we're doing is going to help, and it's just, but, I mean, 10% down in our population, there's going to be a decline, but we're here. And that's the financial.
This time we move on to public comments. Board of Education vice public comment at this point of a regular meeting. A comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy BED-R. No one present for that. Information items, superintendent's reports.
Okay. If you guys know, we approved, or you guys approved, oh, months and two ago, the FCCLA went to Seattle, and I don't know if we've ever had this before. We actually had a winner in the national competition. They're considered a national champion. That was Andrea Cruz in Level Two Creed Speaking. She's the national champion. She did it, what she did, she read it in English, and then she did it in Spanish, and then kind of translated it and answered a bunch of questions, but it was pretty awesome. I don't know, I, I would say we've never had, I don't know who we've, I don't know that, but I don't think we have. And then they were also recognized as a top 10 in the nation for nutrition and wellness, so real proud of them. Great, great show. Now, we have a lot of routine summer maintenance work, well underway, almost completed. We have floors waxed, carpet shampoo, touching up and repainting several areas that needed it, maintenance crew, and extremely busy, painting, building fence, just finished installing the playground. We had to move due to construction and numerous other things around the, around the district. Great school, a few room by, but, you know, it's going vertical finally, so it's, it looks good. A lot of progress this week. They've got the red iron up, and they're starting to block for the safe room portion, and it's moving along good. And we needed to, you know, move along pretty quick. I think they, I think things are going well.
Still Christmas on December?
February when it's going to be completed.
Oh, February?
Yeah. But December, we're going to have our SFR spent. That's the key.
Okay, okay.
But February is what they have tened to be right now for the completion date. Oh, there's a few old, believe it or not, the hurricane in Houston. We had some parts waiting on that for the metal building, but it's not bad, but little, little things, but it's not, not putting this back bad. Everything's going well. Close note, FY 24 and 25 in this office. Auditors will meet virtually tomorrow with us and gather all of the information for our estimate of needs, and a lot going on to prepare for the school year, and that's the superintendent's report.
How those two boys doing?
They are, people may know more, but they're back, I believe they're both home. One's got the plate in his jaw. Another one has pins and plates in his ankles and shoulder blades.
Okay, what, what are we talking about? I don't even know anything about it.
They had a, they were coming to work, and they hit a tree up at Sandridge Church.
Dear, when?
Two weeks, no, two weeks ago.
Okay, I know nothing about it. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. That's okay.
But yeah, one was live flight, one was taken to McAllister, and both will be okay. They're actually, their parents are, I believe they work at Brook and Cove, but it's the, oh, they do their.
Camp.
In Camp Post, yeah. Great boys. They work hard, and they're worried about getting back to their job. They're good boys. You know, Brandy's daughter was in ICU at Talawa. Brandy Miller. I believe she's fine now. Is she home yet?
She's home.
She's home. Yeah, but I think she had pneumonia on top of some other issues and, you know, all three of them worked for her, so.
I don't know.
I know. But everybody, they're all, they're all on the mend, so.
Okay. That it?
That's all.
Okay. Action topic A, consideration of types of general fund expenditures to be allowed during the 24, 25 school year.
Okay, this hasn't changed any from last year, but it's just a list of potential types of things that general money can be used for during the school year. Extensive list.
I make a motion, we approve the types of general fund expenditures to be allowed during the 24, 25 school year.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to approve the types of general fund expenditures to be allowed during the 24, 25 school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic B, consideration of activity fund accounts and sub-accounts for the 24, 25 school year.
Okay, this is also the same as last year, and this is just a list of our activity fund accounts for this current school year.
Make a motion, we approve the activity fund accounts and sub-accounts for the 24, 25 school year.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny to approve the activity fund accounts and sub-accounts for the 24, 25 school year. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic C, consideration of approval of changes to activity fund bank account signers.
Okay, this is just change who can sign to the activity fund. We're going to remove Matt Jones, and add Tammy Bush and Michelle Moore. We also had to remove David Moore. He was still on there. We removed him last year.
Make a motion, we approve the changes to activity fund bank account signers as listed.
My second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the changes to the activity fund bank account signers as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Action topic D, consideration of authorizing school district financial officers, Landy Hamlin and Judy Hamlin, to deposit general fund interest investment earnings into the building fund for the 24, 25 school year.
Hey, each year we have to have board approval to allow us to deposit general fund investment interest into the building fund. You know, last, this year, it's a little more significant. It'll be interest rates up, so it's really a good deal.
I make a motion, we authorize school district financial officers, Landy Hamlin and Judy Hamlin, to deposit general fund interest investment earnings into building fund for 24, 25 school year.
My second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David to authorize school district financial officers, Landy Hamlin and Judy Hamlin, to deposit general fund interest investment earnings into the building fund for the 24, 25 school year. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic E, consideration of approval of issuance of school credit card for Michelle Moore, middle school principal, for $5,000 limit.
Okay, this is just for the new middle school principal. We took away Matt and add Michelle.
Make a motion, approve the, approve of the credit card for Michelle Moore for the school principal, $5,000 limit.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve the issuance of school credit card to Michelle Moore, middle school principal, for the $5,000 limit. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topics F, consideration of designating Tony Gilmore as a district safety coordinator for the 24, 25 school year.
Make a motion, we designate Tony Gilmore as a district safety coordinator for the 24, 25 school year.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to designate Tony Gilmore as district safety coordinator for the 24, 25 school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic G, consideration of designating Tony Gilmore as the school wellness program director for the 24, 25 school year.
Yeah, so these are just continuation duties last year. He directs the meeting, and the chair will just command.
Make a motion, we designate Tony Gilmore as the school wellness program director for the 24, 25 school year.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny to designate Tony Gilmore as the school wellness program director for the 24, 25 school year. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic H, consideration of healthy and fit school advisory committee, safe school committee for the 24, 25 school year.
Okay, each year we have to prove, have the board approve, a healthy and fit, safe school committee, and the list of members is attached.
Make a motion, approve the health and fit school advisory committee, safe school committee for the 24, 25 school years listed.
My second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the healthy and fit school advisory committees and safe school committee for the 24, 25 school year as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Action topic I, consideration of site and district parent family engagement policies for the 24, 25 school year.
Okay, we have four policies, a district, an elementary, middle, and high school site parent family engagement policies for the current school year. These are required for Title I schools, and other than dates, there are no changes from last year's policies.
Make a motion, approve the site and district parent family engagement policies for the 24, 25 school year.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to approve the site and district parent family engagement policies for the 24, 25 school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic J, consideration of approval of the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act FERCAP plan as provided for, through, for, through section 438 of Public Law 93-380.
Okay, this plan is required to be board approved each year. It has four rights for parents and students, and students over 18, in regards to records. They have a right to inspect their records. They can amend, request amendment to records if they believe the record's inaccurate. They have a right to consent to disclosure of personally identifiable information, and they have a right to file a complaint with the USDA if they allege school district failed to comply with FERCAP requirements.
Is this the same as its, same as?
Same as it's always been.
Make a motion, approve the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act plan as provided for, through section 438, Public Law 93-380.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny to approve the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act FERCAP plan as provided for, through section 438 of Public Law 93-380. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic K, consideration of asbestos policy.
Okay, this policy states that we have completed the reinspection of buildings for asbestos, and areas that contain asbestos pose no health problems.
Is it, that's something, do you have to inspect that? Well, I mean.
Every year. Every year. And they charge us every year.
I do. Okay, I just, I don't know a lot about asbestos, but I figured once you inspected it once, you're good. You're good.
I guess they make sure you hadn't touched it.
Well, it's about disturbing.
Yeah, start it up.
Make a motion, approve the asbestos policy.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the asbestos policy. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic L, consideration of resolution allowing payroll deduction and remittance of insurance premiums for programs offered to employees of this district for the 25, 20, 24, 25 school year.
Okay, this resolution has to be board approved each year to allow us to do payroll deductions for insurance premiums.
I mean, I guess there's no changes with that.
No changes.
Make a motion, approve the resolution, the resolution allowing payroll deduction and remittance of insurance premiums for programs offered to employees of this district for the 24, 25 school year.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny to approve the resolution allowing payroll deduction and remittance of insurance premiums for programs offered to employees of this district for the 24, 25 school year. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic M, consideration of renewal of subscription with IXL learning for the 24, 25 school year.
Okay, this is our district-wide formative assessment program, and it provides useful and ongoing feedback to teachers to utilize when developing curriculum and lesson plans.
Does this have anything that comes to you?
Yeah, I get reports.
Yep.
See, kind of see how we're doing.
Yeah, okay.
Make a motion, we renew the subscription with IXL learning for the 24, 25 school year.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David to approve the renewal of the subscription with IXL learning for the 24, 25 school year. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic N, consideration of renewal of edu, I never thought I'd say that word, ingenuity and Odysseyware online programs with, with image learning, Imagine Learning for the 24, 25 school year.
Okay, this is our online curriculum for alternative school, virtual students, enrichment classes, and credit recovery courses.
Same thing on that. You get?
This one I don't. This, it's more of a curriculum. It's just, now, you can see, like, who's on it and how much progress they make, but that's what the teachers do.
Okay. Make a motion, we renew the ingenuity Odysseyware online programs with Imagine Learning for the 24, 25 school year.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve the renewal of ingenuity and Odysseyware online programs for Imagine Learning for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic O, consideration of renewal of Dreambox reading plus services with discovery education for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Uh, this is a supplemental reading program for middle and high school. It's used to address literacy needs of individual, individual students, and this is a good program. It kind of, you know, the kids go in there, read, answer questions, and it kind of gives them passages to read based on their reading level, and it really seems to be working pretty well. It kind of shows you your gains in reading levels over the years and.
So it kind of tracks their progress.
Tracks their progress and see what they've made of, like what their reading level was and they started with the end and it's a.
So they can actually see it.
They can see it, yeah, oh yeah, they can see the gains they've made. It's a pretty good.
Encouragement, yeah.
You know, we, we started this at the high school and then the middle school started last year, and so we're not going to do Renaissance learning anymore at the middle school. Uh, we're still doing, which is the next one, is Renaissance learning at the, at the grade school. And the main reason is there's certain programs they have to use due to RSA, and Reading Plus is not that far down yet, um, so we use that Renaissance, which is the next one.
Reason I ask earlier on this too, does, I guess, does the principal get a, here's your bottom ten?
Yeah, and actually you can work on that RTI program, the lowest level.
Here's your bottom ten students that need exceptional help with this, and, and then the next nine weeks, do, you know, are they still on there or have they moved up?
It's either they're doing progress.
Yeah, you know, that's why, kind of what I was wondering about it. You get, and do you get that where you can look at that and say, hey?
I can, yeah.
You still got the same ten kids on here, something's wrong?
Well, and each week's one, it's a tool. I mean, it's not like the only thing we look at, but it's that multi-tiered system of interventions that we use.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's ongoing, but it takes a lot of time and it's just, that's kind of those, uh, you know, the different classes or remedial classes, that's kind of what those are for, you know, they get.
So do you guys put them in those remedial classes to, to kind of catch up?
Right, it's kind of a, kind of a pullout.
Right.
Right, and that's where like, a grade school, like Lisa and Carrie and all, that's what they, they get those kids and they bring them in. It's not as easy at like through the high school level, because there's certain courses they have to take and have to pass, but that's kind of where Amy does that remediation, and those different teachers all have like remediation classes, like math, and they pull out certain kids and, but it's harder to, you can't just pull them out, you gotta kind of put them in there.
Yeah.
And that's the difficult part of high school is because it's, you know, usually if you're struggling, you need every hour to.
Yes.
But, yeah, that's the, the goal is that, to get those lowest kids, figure where they're at, and these programs are designed to kind of tailor their instructions specifically to them, which, which helps.
Make a motion, we renew Dreambox reading plus services with discovery education for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David to renew, um, approve the renewal of Dreambox reading plus services with discovery education for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic P, consideration of renewal of reading literacy subscriptions with Renaissance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, this is the supplemental program for the elementary school.
Make a motion, we approve the renewal of reading literacy subscriptions with Renaissance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Kenny to approve the renewal of the reading literacy subscriptions with Renaissance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Q, consideration of renewal of OK TLE agreement for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, that's our teacher evaluation system. We have eighty-six teachers, it's twenty-five, seventy-five per teacher, and it's a, it's a good evaluation system, and, uh, this is useful because they can do it all on their, these iPads, and it's just immediate, immediately to the teachers, and as many as we have to evaluate the principals and their time, it's, it's a good, it's a good program to have.
Make a motion, we renew the OK TLE agreement for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Brett and Kenny?
Yes.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny to approve the renewal of OK TLE agreement for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic R, consideration of substitute teacher rates for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, we would like to increase our rates ten dollars per day, so our certified would be eighty dollars per day and non-certified sixty-five. That's a ten dollar increase currently.
Make a motion, we increase our substitute teacher pay for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve the substitute teacher rates for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic S, consideration of gain duty stipends for the employees for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, we increased the rates last year, and so this year we're going to keep the stipend rate the same as last year, so all those rates are the same.
Make a motion to approve the gain duty stipends for employees for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to approve the gain duty stipends for the employees for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic T, consideration of driver's ed classes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, this is the same pay intuition as last year, and we plan to have classes in January and June again.
Make a motion, we approve the driver's ed classes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny to approve the driver's ed classes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic U, consideration of approval of days to hours formula for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
And this allows us to move our calendar requirements from days to hours, so we go from one hundred and eighty days to a thousand and eighty hours.
Make a motion to approve the days to hours formula for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve, um, the, to approve days to hours formula for the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny, Susie, yes. Action topic V, consideration of student handbook changes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, there's a list of changes in your packet, but the changes are mainly dates, times, and there's some verbiage changes, just some grammar issues. Uh, one thing the high school did add was an AI plagiarism policy, and that's kind of big.
You know, I was curious about that, it'll be bad to do that at work, too.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's so easy now, you can just type in there, let's, write me a paper on, and it writes you a paper.
Oh, really?
Yeah, oh, it's, uh.
Wasn't it easy back in our day?
Not mine.
Yeah, back then, you paid somebody.
Yeah.
Sounds like you have my hat a little bit. Inside in that one.
A little more expensive.
Moving on, right?
Make a motion, uh, we accept the student handbook changes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve the student handbook changes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic W, consideration of allowing a school bus to be parked overnight at the homes of Jackie Morris and David Revis for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
They're the same as last year, those drivers, they live on their route.
Make a motion to approve the, allowing a school bus to be parked overnight at the homes of Jackie Morris and David Revis for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Kenny to approve the, a school bus to be parked overnight at the homes of Jackie Morris and David Revis for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic.
Sorry, I just got a question on that. How, so how do you determine if somebody used AI to write? I mean, how do you?
To be honest, I don't know. I don't know. Uh, the English teacher knows, that's why they're the ones that kind of came up with this policy.
You have to know the students, I mean, obviously you don't.
Yeah.
It's like, okay, this is not.
To me, it'd be tough. You know, there's, there's those, you can go in and see if anybody's ever written it before, you can plagiarize directly, but if it's written, I don't know.
I wonder if you could use AI to, to find out if AI is doing, is this real or did you write this?
I don't know, I mean, I.
Use AI to see if AI has been used.
It's a, it's a different world.
Sorry, I just.
Yeah, but it's.
Good question.
Yeah. Okay, where are we? Okay, yes, okay. Motion made by David, seconded by Kenny. Da, David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic H, consideration of revision of the following school board policies. Number one, staff members and electronic or digital communications DHAC, and number two, attendance policy FTC dash R one.
Okay, number one, it updates existing policy, policy to include changes due to recent legislation. So basically, the new legislation states that any digital communication with an individual student shall include the student's parent or guardian unless school communication is on a school-approved platform and related to school and academic communication. So we have to designate some platforms that they could use. The problem is like if it, um, I don't know, for instance, at a band, they send something to everybody, which is, you can do, which is fine, but then if somebody texts back and says, well, I can't do it because I'm sick, you, you can't send back okay or anything, you know, you can't do anything. So we're going to do everything on platforms, okay? And already, some of them already do, like all the, all the athletics use SportsU, it's kind of, it's a program. The thing with these, the platforms I'd like to use are Parent Square, which is her mind, which Courtney currently uses that with all her seniors, so they're kind of familiar with that one. SportsU, I know softball uses it, basketball uses it. Uh, the other one is Class Dojo, which the grade school uses, but they, they communicate with parents using it, but I think we need to designate it anyway. Uh, the other one would be Google Classroom, and then our state or public schools email. Uh, the reason we want to allow over, the, each of these platforms, they have administrative oversight, so we can log in, we can see what's been written, but it's open, I mean, it's not a, you know, it's not private, it's on there. Um, I think it's pretty critical, we, I mean, it's, it's a good, it's good, I mean, it's necessary, but those are the five that I, I think we need to use for them.
I seen that, what's the penalty for not?
Well, if you, you get, first you can go immediately on administratively, basically suspended, and then we investigate, and if it's nothing, they're reinstated, but it goes on their record. But, you know, I don't, it's the one, SportsU, Class Dojo, Google, all that's free, Parent Square is not free, but I think it's a good one for our high school kids, would be, would be a good one for that one. It, it pairs up with our student information system, so that they're already in there. That's where a majority of it is going to be used, because that's the high schools. The attendance policy FTC R one, that's another update to existing policy due to legislation. Uh, they added two reasons for excused, or three reasons really. The first one is you have to include four H activities, um, then speech therapy, occupational therapy, or other services related to students' IEP. And then the other one is the students will receive an excused activity absences, absence if they are participating in a release time program by an independent entity off school premises for no more than three class periods per week, or maximum one hundred and twenty-five class periods per school year if several conditions are met. You know, the policy is in there, uh, the different things they have to, it's the student's parent, legal guardian, provide written consent, no school funds, uh, other than the minimums, just basically administrative costs, like basically registering them are expended, uh, no school district personnel, equipment, or resource are involved in providing the instruction. Uh, the independent entity maintains attendance records, makes those records available to the school district. Transportation is provided to and from by the independent entity.
Do you have an example of that?
Well, the only thing I could think of, and it's a new law to put out there, but like maybe like, or for like, I think like a church had a class that they were wanting kids to go through, or something like that.
Or maybe the vote tag, would that be?
Well, I don't know if it'd be the vote tag, but I'm, I'm not real sure. The only one I can think of would be the, the religious part of it, um, but it, it's kind of, you know, three class periods per week, and you think of like a high school kid, well, what are they going to do the other two? You can't miss, so it's, it's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of things to work out, but we don't have anything right now, but.
Something's coming up.
Something's going to come up, and I think other schools, some are some, well, those are two, they're going to put them in a study hall, but I, I don't know how you, I don't know. It's, a lot of things will work out, but it's, you know, you know, sometimes we make laws that work for somebody that wanted that law written that way.
One school.
Yeah. We're trying to figure out how to.
State has to implement it.
So we'll put this kind of in our attendance policy, and we may have to tweak it here and there, but for now, it's kind of, kind of where we are.
Make a motion, we approve staff members and electronic or digital communications DHAC and attendance policy FTC R one as presented.
Second.
Brett, seconded by Kenny to approve, um, electronic or digital communication DHAC and the attendance policy, um, for FTC dash, um, R one. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Y, consideration of approval of football field sound system repair, which will be paid for by the Athletic Booster Club.
Okay, this is allow the Booster Club to repair and update the football field sound system.
Is it like rung down, or is this just a?
Well, it makes a lot of popping noises, it's pretty loud, and it, it's a, it's pretty old, and luckily they're willing to pay for it, so we get a lot, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the football field sound system repair, which will be paid for by the Athletic Booster Club.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to approve the football field sound system repair, which will be paid for by the Athletic Booster Club. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Z, consideration of proposal for Tealala Concepts, how do you say that? For purchase and installation of middle school outdoor LED video board signage.
Okay, this is for an LED video board sign at the middle school, replace that one, you know, they put the sticks up, and, uh, this is through a donation from the Jerry Jackson Foundation, and we would pay thirty-one hundred dollars, mainly that, that is to do the Stigron Middle School at the top of it. There's kind of a picture of it in there. It's, uh, it's pretty cool, it'll be lit up.
Well, I couldn't, I didn't see it in here.
Yeah, it's pretty neat.
Pretty good.
Is this all electronic?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I know it, that thing with the stick's been there a lot of years.
It's a long time.
It was there when I was in school.
It looked like a hundred years.
It's been a long time, it's been a long time.
I'm going to say that.
Better not.
Make a motion, we, uh, accept the proposal from Tealala Concepts for the purchase and installation of middle school outdoor LED video board signage. and installation of most of our LED video board signage. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve the, um, Tehalaa Concepts for purchase and installation of middle school, Concepts for purchase and installation of middle school outdoor LED video board signage. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Okay, it's time to move on to executive session. Proposed executive session to discuss an act on phone business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three oh seven B one of the meeting act. Number one, discussion of certified personnel's salary and fringe benefit packages for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number two, discussion of seven percent support personnel pay raises for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number three, discussion of resignation of Justin Dunn, science teacher-coach effective June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Number four, discussion of retirement of Sonia Hurst, kindergarten teacher assistant effective June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Number five, discussion of resignation of Sabrina Bussey, kindergarten teacher mentor effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Discussion of employment of grade school assistant principal, twenty-first century director for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number seven, discussion of employment of middle school keyboard computer science teacher assistant principal for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number eight, discussion of employment of high school math teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number nine, discussion of employment of middle school, high school teacher, science teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number ten, discussion of employment of fourth grade teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number eleven, discussion of employment of kindergarten teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number twelve, discussion of employment of high school grade star secretary for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number thirteen, discussion of employment of middle school teacher assistant for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And number fourteen, discussion of employment of assistant cheer coach for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Make a motion, I'm sorry, convene an executive session.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny at six seventeen PM to convene an executive session. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David at six forty-seven PM to return the board to open session. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Members present during executive session were Kenny Whitson, Brett Moore, David Haggins, and Susan White. Superintendent Dr. Palm Kettles was also present. No motions nor votes were taken. Make a motion on number one.
Uh, so, make a motion to approve certified personnel's salary and fringe benefit package for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I'll say.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David to approve the certified personnel, um, salary and fringe benefit package for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes.
Make a motion to accept seven percent support personnel pay raise in this for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the seven percent support personnel pay raises for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Justin Dunn, science teacher-coach effective June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Second. Go ahead. Second.
Brett, uh, motion made by David, seconded by Brett to accept the resignation of Justin Dunn, science teacher-coach effective June the eleventh, twenty twenty-four. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes.
Make a motion to we accept the retirement of Sonia Hurst, kindergarten teacher assistant effective June seventeenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four. Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David.
For beating.
To accept the retirement of Sonia Hurst, kindergarten teacher assistant effective June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes.
Accept the resignation of Sabrina Bussey, kindergarten teacher mentor effective June thirtieth. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to accept the resignation of Sabrina Bussey, kindergarten teacher mentor effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Make a motion to approve the employment of Rhonda Johnson as high school, as grade school assistant principal, twenty-first century director for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to approve the employment of grade school, uh, Rhonda Johnson as grade school assistant principal, twenty-first century director for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes.
Make a motion to employ a middle school keyboard computer science teacher assistant of Daniel Lowkey for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny to employ Daniel Lowkey, uh, middle school keyboard computer science teacher assistant principal for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes.
Make a motion to employ Devin Wilson for the high school math teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to employ Devin Wilson, high school math teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes.
Make a motion to employ Elizabeth Hill as a middle school, high school science teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to employ Elizabeth Hill, middle school, high school science teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes.
Make a motion to employ Lovin Garis for fourth grade teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny to employ Lovin Garis, uh, for the fourth grade teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes.
Make a motion to employ Victoria Howard, uh, kindergarten teacher for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to employ Victoria Howard, kindergarten teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Make a motion to employ Tracy Hurst at high school, grade star, secretary for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to employ Tracy Hurst, high school, grade star, secretary for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes.
Make a motion, uh, to employ Hannah Farley, middle school teacher assistant for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David to employ Hannah Farley, uh, middle school teacher assistant for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie?
Make a motion to employ Ella Russell-Cow, assistant cheer coach for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to, um, employ Ella Russell-Cow, assistant cheer coach for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Okay. Any new businesses?
No new business.
No new business.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett at six fifty-three PM to adjourn. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Next regular meeting, August twelfth, twenty twenty-four.